That being said, we are broadcasting and the chair. This is a planning board meeting of March 5th, 2025. We'll start with roll call. Ryan Falcone here. Jen Bluestein. And Jack as well. Both there.
Sorry guys, I'm here. It's Jen Bluestein.
Paul McClark here.
Charlie Palmasano.
President.
Amy Pennington is not here.
Rick Painter here.
Here, Jack McCarron. Jack, are you with us?
Yes, he's on the commute.
Yeah, Jack is here. Can you hear me?
Yes.
Thank you.
Matt Duffett here.
Uh, we have a public hearing tonight, PHCR Incorporated, related to 570, 572 Merrimack Street. A representative of the applicant would like to come forward and make the presentation. We're happy to hear what you have.
Thank you. My name is Jeff Roloff. I'm the attorney for the applicant. I'm here tonight with the most of the project team. We're missing our landscape designer, but the others are here. They'll introduce themselves as they come up tonight. We've listed them on the first slide that you see up on the screen here. If it's okay, I am going to work from these slides. I'll start with an introduction to the project site, get you oriented to the larger development site, and then the portion that's the subject of the two applications before you. Give you a few images of the existing conditions, introduce you to the project, and then I'm going to turn it over to Steve Sawyer, civil engineering at Millennium. He'll go through some of the plans now, and then turn it over to the architectural Modern Heritage representative to go through the building designs, quickly the landscaping, and then we'll turn it over to the board for questions. Next slide, please. So existing conditions, these properties are at the right at the roundabout, Spofford Street, Merrimack Street. The, the properties extend, the larger development area extends from five Spofford Street, around the corner to 572 and 570 Merrimack Street, as you can see on that left slide there. The blue boundary is the overall development boundary. The existing conditions and the right is the same, you know, different aerial image, but the same area. Currently, you have five lots out there, residential lots, four homes, two of whom, two which haven't been occupied for 20 plus years, and a number of different accessory structures. The project entails the creation of five new lots, reconfigured lots, and construction, proposed construction of five single-family homes. All of this existing structures, except two of the sheds are going to be demolished. The applicant has already been in front of the historic commission, got the one-year delay, and that expires this spring, that expires this spring. The only two structures to remain are a very small shed along the riverfront there, that's the Merrimack River to the north. And there's a shed in the middle of the site that they're going to relocate and reuse over this area, which is on the site plan. Next slide. So this is just a, this is the plan that you and your package. I'm not going to go into it in too much detail, but it does show the grades of the site. And you can see from the grades that basically from the roundabout, there's a grade. The property basically goes downhill to the river, as you would expect. This shows the existing buildings in more detail, some of the structures, but I'm not going to, I'm not going to go into that. Right now, you do have that in your plan set. Next slide. Just a few images that we, I grabbed today from Street View on Google. So this top left corner is a view from the roundabout, looking back towards the east of Merrimack Street. So existing conditions, this image is from in front of the 570 Merrimack Street property, looking back towards the roundabout. And then this is a direct, straight-on view of that currently at 570 Merrimack. So the project boundaries are just to the right of the existing driveway there. This house will come down, all these buildings will come down, and that's 572 Merrimack there. So this is the area, this is the portion of the larger development site. That's the subject of our pending applications, and I'll get into that in a second. Next slide. So the starting point for the overall development is to create three A and R lots along Spofford Street and around the corner. So those are labeled in our application materials, lot one, lot two, and lot three. Those lots are not part of the applications that are in front of you today. We'll deal with the A and R plans separately. But it was important, I thought, to show that plan because it's this lot four, which can be established by way of the A and R process. So all of these four lots would be 100% compliant lots that could be approved and built as single-family homes, just through the A and R approval process. Lot four in blue is the subject of the applications that are in front of you. Next slide. So within, and this is the only portion of it, what we're proposing is to extend a court on this sort of western area of the site, in the vicinity of that existing driveway that I showed you, 570 Merrimack Street. And then two lots that we're labeling lot four A and lot four B. Within, and both, all three of these features are then within the lot four that I showed you in that previous A and R plan. So the applications in front of you are, number one, an application for a special permit for the court and lane, Rogers Court, and a definitive subdivision plan, also related to the court, and the creation of these two lots, both of which will be frontage on Rogers Court. I have the zoning matrix there. The lots are compliant. I'm not going to go through it, but I wanted to include it in case you had questions about any of the dimensions. Next slide. So with that, I'm going to turn it over to Steve Sawyer to get into the details of the court. So again, focus of the applications are the design of the court that's proposed, Rogers Court, and the configuration of the two lots off of that court with the utilities, et cetera. With that, I'll turn it over to Steve. Steve, I'll give the light.
Good evening. Steve Sawyer with Millennium Engineering. So this application, the courts and lanes, we're constructing a new court to create frontage for lots four A and lot four B. The. Yeah, so we're creating this court. It's going to be a 250-foot-long private court. It's designed per the definitive subdivision regulations and zoning regulations. It's required to be 30 feet in width, as far as the private driveway, 20 feet in width of pavement, with a turnaround suitable for fire apparatus to turn, to make the turn in back and turnaround. This one is actually, did a very similar one. I think it's called Donahue Court off of Topps. It's pretty much the same alignment as that lot with two, almost exactly the same with a lot off the left side and a lot off the rear. Very similar, very similar in orientation. You'll notice that there's a turnaround at the end. That turnaround isn't intended for a fire, fire truck. It's just intended for use of lot four B for, as a, as a rounded driveway for ease of entering and exiting property. One item of note, I don't think we received any comments from the fire chief on this, Lieutenant Fire Chief, but the applicant, he has met with the, met with the fire chief and reviewed the plan, and they're okay. Verbally, he said he was fine with the layout of, of the roadway. So actually, we jump to the next slide. Okay, actually, this just zooms in, gives a little clearer view of the, of the roadway, 20-foot-wide road. The turnaround sort of incorporated, we incorporated the turnaround into, or the hammerhead into the turnaround, just blends together a little more visually appealing. The, actually, the landscape architect came up with that configuration to sort of, just improve the visual appearance of that driveway and ease of use, use of the driveway. We have a turnaround or a turnaround or a background here with the garage entry in that location. One item, as far as the, the comments that came back from the city, typically with the roadway, you carry the pavement through into the, this is all pavement and flush. And what the DPW is asked, DPS is asked, is that we provide a, continue the sidewalk through and do it as a, as a dry paper. So this, this will be updated. We have no issue with that. It'll be updated. So this will be a concrete sidewalk with a concrete apron. So the sidewalk will run across the entry flush with two homes. It makes sense to provide an easier pedestrian access. And given the light traffic and light use, there's no issue with, with providing that modification to the entry. And so both of these lots here are conforming. They meet all of the regulations, lot with area frontage. The frontage for lot four A is pulled off, the main frontage is pulled off of the, the new court. And then the frontage for lot four B is this part of the, part of the private way that wraps this manner to get your required frontage along that lot. I think we can jump to the next slide. All right, so this is the utility split. So as far as stormwater, one thing on grading, the, the road does, we, we slope down at about 3%, 3% leveling area up at the road. Then we start diving down at 6% for the main part of the road, which is allowed in the regulations. The grade does fall away. We do fall pretty close to the grade until we get to about this point. And about this point, then the natural grade falls away fairly abruptly. So we do have to fill, particularly in this corner here, there's a fair amount of filling. You can see there's a fill slope here. So this is all to provide access, vehicle access into the garage. We do have, it's about a nine, I think nine or, the maximum fill is about nine or 10 feet at this corner. And then it slopes up to about three feet across this, this side here. So we do have a fill area here to, to make this, make this all work. There is a small wall here. This wall here is all, the entire length is less than four feet. So it's basically a landscape wall just to hold back a little bit of, a little bit of soil there to bring the grade up. One thing I did do on this, to where our right way is up against this butter to the east, is I shifted the actual pavement, shifted it to the left, to the, to the west, to this side, to give a large buffer between, a larger buffer to the adjacent property, so there can be enhanced planting there. As far as the grading and as far as the gradage on this, what I've done is I've super elevated, directed the water to the left curve line, or to the left edge of pavement. Then along this edge, I've done a, it's a stone dive French. It's basically, it'll be about two feet of river on stone. There's a pipe where the water will trickle off the road into that pipe. And then it's conveyed, it's conveyed to a little area drain here, and then to a, I do have a water quality unit. And then in this location here, there's two large concrete chambers, subsurface chambers. And that's where all, actually, there's a, all of the stormwater from this driveway and the road here, this driveway, and everything's collected. We have a small catch base in here, a small catch base in here, and then this area here is collected in this location. So all of, we've controlled and collected all of the paved surfaces here. And it's all conveyed from this catch base to this catch base to water quality unit where it's pre-treated. And then we convey it into a large underground infiltration chamber system. With that, we treat, we, we provide the water quality volume and the recharge volume required for all of the paved areas. One thing of note of this site, we don't, we don't have to meet peak runoff rate, reduce or, reduce or control the peak runoff rate here because the receiving waters are tightly, tightly influenced. If you're discharging to a titled area, that's, it's called standard two of the DEP regs. You don't need to meet that. So what we, what we do need to meet though is some water quality in, in groundwater recharge, recharge volume. And I think there was, there was a comment, I think Andy, there was a comment about trying to use, utilize permeable pavement. This is a little steep. Typically, the, the regulations say if it's over 5%, they don't recommend permeable pavement just because the water has too much velocity to permeate, to permeate it through the pavement. I typically don't use that unless it's kind of the last resort, if you have poor soils, high groundwater. I did use it, I think it was a project that was old, it was down by, down the old car, auto body, or the old car lot down near Rivers Edge. We did condos there and there. We had very poor soils, high groundwater, and no place to treat stormwater. So we did, there's pancake flood. So it did work at that application. This application, not so much. I prefer to do standard-type collection, you know, catch basin, deep sumps, and water quality units to a large, robust chamber. Easier to maintain, much longer longevity. And in the other problem is if you do use permeable pavements, if they do patch to, end up patching the pavement or doing any work, it's a specialized process, specialized pavement. So it's, it's a much more simpler, simpler approach here. It definitely works with the topography where we're not actually excavating, where, you know, instead of filling, you're putting chambers in. So instead of requiring so many cubic yards of fill, we just put a couple of large chambers in to take up that space and use it, use it as stormwater treatment. So that's the nuts and bolts of the stormwater here. Each of the homes, for the homes, we'll be utilizing just standard dry wells. So for the homes, the roof runoff is clean. So we have, I think in this area, this area here, there's a couple, there are four by four chambers at this corner here. And so we direct any of the pavement, any of the hard surface here around the pool, there's a small stone collection trench. And then as far as the downspouts, they'd be piped to this location. Those are sized for the, what they call the recharge volume. So what we need to do for those is hold 0.6 inches over the all-new impervious area, which these need. Same for this house in the pool here, pool patio here. We have a gang of chambers here. Where all the stormwater from the hardened surfaces here are directed to that location. One item of note is that this is a, this could be considered a redevelopment project. And there is a lot of impervious surfaces here, a lot of pavement, a bunch of buildings. And one item of note, I did take credit for that for the recharge volume. This is considered, where we're ripping up and providing new, we consider it a new, a new project. So we're totally complying, totally complying with any DEP stormwater regulations. Now, there was some, you know, a little bit of confusion. I think one of the comments from the city engineer was saying, why are you doing all this? You don't need to. But what happens is, is when you look at this lot, this project in its entirety, we have five lots. So with five lots, it triggers DEP stormwater review or stormwater mitigation measures. So we, you know, we, we've included it as part of the, we think it's important to, particularly for water quality and recharge, makes sense to take care of that. As far as water service, one item is we have a water, new water main that runs down, and we end up with a hydrant. We installed a hydrant at the end of the, end of the court. And we have a water service that's pulled off of that in that direction. And originally, I had the water surface kind of pulled off in serpent time, or pulled off and then bend, bended into the new home. The DPS, who's it, John Carey, I think the DPS, there was a comment from him regarding that location. And in a discussion with him, I'm just going to pull it off and go straight into the building. The main reason I pulled it from the end here is for water quality issues. The six-inch pipe is a little large. I think John Eric White had mentioned about, hey, you really need a six-inch main. And the main reason, six-inch main, it's the minimum need, the minimum for the fire hydrant. So we needed to bring the six-inch main down for the hydrant, and it made sense to pull the services off of that at the very end. So you have continuous flow through that six-inch main for water quality issues. It keeps, you don't want stagnant water in the, in that pipe. But we still have one, we have one surface here, and then the other service is going to be down pretty close to the end. So we will have, I'm just sliding it back a bit, and I don't, I don't think there's concern with any water quality of stagnation, stagnation water in that six-inch main. As far as sewer for the, the homes, this will need to be pumped. There's a small pump station here, so it'll come up gravity, be a small lift station. And then what we're doing, instead of running it into the road and out, this is going to be a common service here for this home. So that when this home is built, it'll pop into this manhole. So we'll just, and this home here flows by gravity in this manhole, and then we're going to tie in to the sewer across the street. It's in its same general location now. There's an existing, with the, the existing home down lower, I think it's a three or four inch. They actually pump, pump the sewer up to this location now. So we'll be pulling that, you know, we'll be abandoning that four inch and putting in a new six-inch gravity across Merrimack Street. So I think that, that covers everything. And then as far as there is, as I mentioned before, this is a fill slope here. This will be landscaped. The, the landscape architect is taking a careful consideration. This is going to be sort of a restoration area. We'll be going before the conservation commission, I believe, March 18th. And with that, we'll be looking at the project in its entirety regarding the planting and stormwater and landscaping. So that is that. And if I could, one thing of note is there is a drain, a city drain that runs through the property here. So this drain was installed as part of the roundabout project. Originally, there was a drain, you can kind of, here, you can kind of see it faded back. Originally, the city ran the drainage from the Merrimack Street right through the center of the property. And as part of this, the roundabout, they rerouted the drainage to come down this edge of the property, is not to impact the, you know, to take, reduce the impact and the encumbrance of that drain in the property. So we're, our roadway is on top of that, which is no issue. Actually, it provides easier access. There's an existing manhole here. And the drain does, that's a kind of a strange thing. Goes out and bends, comes out here and then bends down and discharges here. One thing we are doing is at this bend, we're going to be installing a manhole at the bend, which is typically what you do in, in a bend in a large drain, particularly this large, it's 24-inch, I believe. And then the overflow, instead of providing a new discharge point to the wetland, we're just going to, the overflow from this is just going to tie into that manhole and then discharge through the existing city drain. And I think that, that covers everything as far as the technical and civil engineering. I think I'm going to pass it off.
Good evening. Ian with Modern Heritage, and we represent the build and design portion of the project. So just kind of wanted to introduce you guys to, you know, what our thought process was going into the design. You know, the considerations that we gave to the site, to the riverfront location. So we thought, we put a lot of emphasis on the orientation of the structures, you know, on the lots, so that it would maximize the, you know, the aesthetics as well as really kind of keep the view corridors open to the river as much as possible and work well with the way the lots are divided. This, this drawing here represents a building on lot four A. The top elevation that you're looking at, that will be the road-facing elevation. We try to keep it as narrow and aesthetically pleasing as possible, and then we did the long portion of the house running parallel to the proposed, proposed new court. The bottom elevation is the back elevation, which would face lot three. And then, do you mind next, next slide, please? So this is going to be the, the top elevation is the river-facing. So that has, that would walk out to a stone patio and have a porch coming off the great room and off the back, it would be a porch as well. The bottom elevation would be the front entrance of the house facing the court with a little roundabout right in front of the door, and then the main parking area over by the garage. And again, you know, we really, all of us are very local, and we took a lot of emphasis on New England design and elements. We really tried to incorporate some of these into the building, also keeping budget in mind. But, you know, we really feel that this is a good representation of Newbury Court and kind of surrounding community. Am I going to the next slide? This is lot four B. So this design, we really worked hard to try to keep it as low-profile as possible. This is built into the grade, because as was mentioned before, the grade is sloping down. So we wanted the front facing to be as low as possible. So that's what you see on the bottom elevation is the elevation that would be facing the road. So it is on angled, the road would be slightly at an angle, but as you come down the court, this is what you would see. The top elevation is just the backside, the side elevations, which would be facing the fence line with the butters off Spofford Street. Next slide, please. So these are the other two elevations. The top elevation is the one facing, it would be southwest. And the bottom elevation is the river-facing. So as you can see, the grade slopes down quite a bit there. And so at the back, we really tried to push it into the, into the grade as much as possible. Next slide. So this, we wanted to give you guys an idea of the project as a whole. We worked with Elise, our landscape architect. We know that there's the importance of the indigenous species and maintaining the riverfront, the, the local species, and trying to keep everything as, as localized as possible. It's important to note that we've been working with environmental consultants as well to talk about drainage, you know, the natural ability of the plants, and really work with trying to incorporate it to restore the riverfront. Next slide. So again, this is, this is jumping into what the proposal is here with you guys today. This is lots four A and four B, and this is really kind of honing in on the specifics, the landscape. You know, it's been presented, and we'll go through the conservation commission to talk a lot more details. But we have gone through extensively to try to present, you know, as much as possible, keeping the indigenous species. And then the way it's being approached is there's four areas. There's going to be the street-facing plantings, there's going to be the driveway plantings, then there'll be the restoration area, and then the residential plantings. And each one has details in the proposals for each area. And then, yep, thank you. And then these are just some perspectives to give you guys an idea. This is right in front of 570 Merrimack Street. So this is looking right down Rogers Court, the proposed Rogers Court. And giving you an idea, the structure on the right is the existing butters home, and then the left would be starting four A. And then you can kind of see down the driveway. This is the view from, this, the bottom left is the view from four A, looking off their patio down towards the river. And then the image on the right, the rendering on the right, would be on, looking at lot three patio, looking down towards the rivers. Next slide, please. And then, again, this is the same image, just a little bit blown up. This is really where we kind of wanted to show you, this is what we're requesting and proposing as. This is really where we kind of wanted to show you, this is what we're requesting and proposing as an addition for Rogers Port. This is an image or rendering looking off Lot number one, right off the patio and right down to the river. And one of the ideas too is to keep the, as much green as possible, as much existing as possible. We're really trying to maintain the integrity of the, the riverfront itself. So a lot of emphasis is done into that. This is an image of the, of the roundabout. Existing is the top left. And then in the bottom is what we're proposing. We'd also talked about doing a little area, attribute to the property. So that's something that we'll, we'll get into further if we do the A and R lots.
Dan, yep. Thank you. So we're pretty much done here. I just want to point out, I did submit a project narrative that went through all this special permit criteria and how the project meets it. Again, we're applying the special permit criteria for one application, the subdivision standards. There is a peer reviewed letter that has been issued. We haven't yet responded to that. Steve submitted a letter that responded to all the city staff comments. We still have to respond to the peer review comments. There'll be some minor revisions to the plans made in response to that. So we, we are expecting the hearing to get continued. We're going to submit a final set of plans for you to ultimately consider. You're going to provide additional feedback this evening as well, which mainly did other changes. We don't know, but just in conclusion for our presentation, as Ian said, there's been a lot of thought put into the building layout, not only for the two lots that are for you, but all five lots. Coordinated effort. The proposed court will remain a private court. It will not be, the city will have no responsibilities for it. Maintenance obligations will be established in a driveway agreement to be recorded. The court does only serve two lots, which is one of the criteria. And just generally the, the building layout, the architectural design, the landscape designs have been really carefully and thoughtfully developed to protect public safety in terms of the driveway locations and designs, to enhance the streetscape to this important entry to the Newbury Court. And also to enhance the natural resources on the property and the riverfront area, which will be a huge focus for the Conservation Commission, obviously. So it will be in front of them. So that's it. Good presentation. Thank you.
Any questions from the board?
Couple of questions.
Yep.
So on the civil engineering plan, you know, you mentioned that it's going to be a private court.
Yep.
But it's going to have a hydrant water in, in the street. So that can be covered by some HOA agreement or some kind of agreement.
Yep.
The question is, on the backside where you have the sewer lift, and then I think I, I saw that it drifts over to Lot 3. How will you handle that? Will Lot 3 be part of an HOA or is that just a separate?
I, I don't think that'll be part of an HOA, but there'll, there'll be easement agreements to share the use of those utility runs. So the questions of responsibility for maintenance will be addressed in the easement documents.
Okay.
We will. We'll have easement agreements. And I think we would expect, it is part of the subdivision process. So we would expect a condition that requires that those easement documents be provided prior to occupancy or something like that. So yes.
Could you go over just a little bit more detail about the super elevated roadway and what that, what that entails? And is that just a higher level subset? The drainage goes off to those, the various drains that you specified?
Yeah, yeah. So, you know, typically what you do is you crown, you, you know, a larger road to crown it. So it goes to both gutter lines. And whether you create a swale or curve it and collect it with catch basins. This is very, you know, it's only 20, it's only 20 feet wide. So it's basically a, a large driveway. So then, you know, what I've done is I've lifted this edge of the pavement. So it slopes at about 2% from when you're looking, going down from right to left. So all the stormwater flows to this gutter line that runs down the left side. So on, just off that gutter line, what, what you, what we'll be doing is I think it's 18 inches wide. So you have the edge of the pavement. You got an 18 inch trench. The bottom portion of the trench, you'll, you'll have three quarter, it's put in three quarter crushed stone. And then you have, I think it's either a six or eight, I think it's an eight inch perforated pipe. So the water drains, the water will be picked up in that perforated pipe that it drains through. Now, providing, it doesn't look great, like three quarter crushed stone on the surface is not very visually appealing. So what I've done, I think I did the same, this is the same drainage technique I use in Rogers Port. I think I did the same. It was a project in Newbury, off of Ross Lane. But so what I do is you put a layer of filter fabric and then the top four inches, you do a two to three inch, two to, two to three inch river run rounded decorative rounded stone. So it's a lot nicer looking, you know, it's a nice rounded, clean looking stone, almost much, much better to look at. And then to maintain it, what happens, you end up with sediment. So the sand that would every probably, it's probably every two years, two to three years, which you end up doing, it's a little bit labor intensive, but it's not horrible. You just pull that stone out. Typically pull the stone out and then replace the fabric. And then you can wash it, you know, you wash any sand out of the stone, put the stone back in, you can peel it up. I believe that's what they've been doing down at, off of Ross Lane. They've done that to keep it clean and useful. I wouldn't propose this for a city street. This is not, not an application, just due to the fact it's a little tedious for maintenance. But that's something that a homeowner's agreement can easily take care of with a, you know, highly qualified landscape maintenance personnel could easily take care of that maintenance.
So it is all draining to the west side?
Yes, it all drains to the west. Yeah. So then what happens? Yeah. So it ends up, and then if it doesn't get picked up, I put a small area drain here if it's, if it's raining really hard. So if it's picked up in an area drain at this location. And then from here, it's piped directly to this water quality unit there. So what happens is though, there is some water that we're not picking up. So everything slopes, it's, everything's sloping towards this island. So what we did is we put granite edging on the side. So instead of the water running over that island, it'll hit that edge and then run around and get picked up at this catch basin here. At that catch basin there. It's a, I ended up proposing a 30, it's such a small drainage area. I'm just doing a 30 inch. Shea makes a mini, it's a basically mini manhole, a little more robust than a plastic. But it's concrete, but it's only 30 inches in diameter. We provide a full four foot sump with a hooded outlet for a, for a sediment removal. But it's a little easier install in, little, a little easier to install and less impact. So then you also have this whole area of the driveway, everything's flowing. This, now everything kind of, well, everything flows in this manner. We, the apron of the garage flows away at 2%. This is flowing coming down at 5% and we're coming across at 2%. So we end up with a low point here. I've also curved this edge here. So we don't want water running over this edge and over that steep slope. So I provided it granite edging along that right edge. So we control the water. And then there's a low point at this area, at this point right here, that that catch another 30 inch basin will pick up and convey to this central water quality unit. So, you know, one of the items, we, we did do test pits out there and it's all sand. Typically along the river, we have found that. That's one good thing about Newbury Court is this whole area from the river up to High Road or High Street is all beautiful gravel and sand, low groundwater. So it's that same material. One thing we do have to make sure is that the, the portion, the, the very bottom of the chamber will be in the natural material. We are bringing fill in around, around it. But the bottom of it will be in the naturally occurring sand is where infiltration will take place. So, but as part of that, you need, they call a 44% TSS removal before you put it into the chamber. The catch basins and the catch basins only in the infiltration pipe or the, the conveyor pipe, that only gives you 25%. So I needed an additional device to give you the removal. Hence that's why I used the, they call it a water particle separator. It's one of those swirl particle separators, which actually give you more than the 25 additional percent need. They typically be like, you know, depends what the unit is. It gives you between 50 and 80%. So we do meet the pre-treatment requirement before putting it into that chamber, which is important, just for the longevity of the chamber. Thank you.
And one, one section. Back to the drainage. Again, it, it seems like the most sensitive area is, is the radius area, the bottom of the cul-de-sac, the turnaround.
Yeah.
Where it falls off.
Yeah.
If, if you've got a slope of 6% coming, coming down, do you have enough height there or enough slope back into the center of island that you're comfortable with nothing overflowing and creating issues down that slope?
So this, yeah, so we have.
It seems like a very vulnerable spot.
Yeah. So one thing, yeah. So this is 2% cross slope here. We do come down. It's five. It kind of, yeah, we start at five and I think we taper to three. This comes back at 2, 2% here. So these grades aren't, you know, the two and 3% is tremendous. You will have a little bit of velocity coming down here, but an important, a important item of note here is the drain, you think about this drainage area. So everything here is flowing across. So you're going to end up, probably it's going to be cut off. You're going to end up with the only water that is coming down this, this slope here is really just the very end of this cul-de-sac. Here, the very end of the turnaround. Most of the water is getting picked up in this location here. And that's, that's kind of why I did the, the stone drip edge there. Was instead of concentrating in, thinking of the, you know, the majority of the drainage area is this area here. So instead of it all concentrated in one catch basin where it might blow by, you have, I have this long trench where it has ability to slowly weep in and pick up. And then whatever doesn't get picked up, ends up, it's going to split here a bit. This is flat. This area is all fairly flat, 2% less. So it's not all velocity here. This all gets picked up here. So then it's just, we have this area, this area of the cul-de-sac that ends up at this one location. And it's a six inch, you know, it's, it's gritted edging. It's not burned, so the plow's not going to knock it out of there. Granite edging with I believe a six inch reveal. So there shouldn't be any, I, I'm not concerned with any water charging past and up and over that reveal. If this was a 300 foot stretch of road, yeah, you're going to be, you'd have a torrent running down there.
You've got, you've got a low point for the.
Yeah. Yeah, right here.
There's a curb on the back.
That's, yeah, that's curb. You're going to, yeah, you got a six inch curb then the basin. So yeah, so you'd need that to really get in. You believe me, you're right. If we have 200 or 300 feet of road and that was the one low point, we'd have an issue. But yeah, if you definitely have an issue, but it's such a small drainage here. It's only, it's probably less, I don't know, it's probably 800 square feet, which isn't very much favoring.
I noticed on, I think it's page 18 in the presentation, you had, you depicted, you know, the turnaround there. Now it looks like you have a lot of vegetation. Would, would that mitigate, help mitigate any of the water flow?
Oh, that would definitely, it mitigates everything that falls on the, you know, particularly up on the cul-de-sac or any of the vegetated areas you have. That will help mitigate it. We're not, we're basically controlling the, controlling the water on the, we're controlling it either into the drip edge or into those two catch basins. We're not allowing it to run over, over slope. I think the main, you know, a lot of the concern was, oh, we definitely was, because of that steep slope, you really couldn't do country drainage or swales or, or something like that, because all of a sudden you have this big drop. So I was kind of forced to control it on the property before or in that area underneath the road prior to hitting that slope. But yeah, absolutely. The, the center cul-de-sac with all that vegetation and the good soils, there'll be, there'll be, as far as the landscape areas, there'll be a very low rate of runoff from Lot 4A coming onto the property or onto the roadway and also from that center island into that paved area and dump.
So, thank you for explaining about that old drain from Merrimack Street that comes hanging across the park. Has that actually been abandoned? And the plan, which, which is not shown is either abandoned or to be abandoned.
That should be shown to be abandoned.
Okay. It is, it is not abandoned now, but it will be. I was wondering about how I was going to go into that in the house. I think I've seen housing. So the, there's a statement actually in the narrative or it's in the narrative and it was picked up in the staff report that said that, and the reason I'm not criticizing narrative, but I would like to see that the staff report changed in terms of the special permit findings, because it says that the court reduces the number of frequencies points at which vehicles may enter Merrimack Street. But I think there's only enough footage along the Merrimack Street side for two house, two house lines. And so only two driveways anyway. And that's what's being posed is two drive. So there's no reduction in the number of points. It's really just the doubling of the density of this lot, Lot 4.
Yeah, that's very.
Yeah. So I, there's two places, finding number two and finding number three that, that may be in a little place too. We'll have to find another justification for the statement. And let's see, so maybe this is more for Andy in terms of process. The sequence of the endorsing and recording of the A and R and approving the division in the court. Is that, will we be seeing the A and R?
We should be doing. I think so. I think that's the clean, we talked about that because you almost could skip it. If this gets approved like this, you could almost do this plan with the A and R lots and have it all endorsed. But I think it might be cleaner to do an A and R plan that creates Lot 4. And then this plan that splits Lot 4.
Yeah.
And the street trees along Merrimack Street are, this is like the project that we have in Hancock Street where the street trees are on private property. They're not public street trees. And I, you know, I, I would like to, to resolve that. I think we have more room to work with here. I don't know whether, whether it might be, it might be possibility, but there's enough room to essentially give the city easement a right of way.
To be able to maintain those streets. By, by having been through that, that particular permitting process and then also the city council process for accepting the easement for those areas. I, I think it may be helpful for us that I can reach out more on this, but tough base in the other council side essentially. But the idea of accepting that responsibility or not so much the responsibility, I should say, to get the permit there. I think here it would be maintained, the private trees are being maintained. But I think the idea there, I'm not mistaken, was that the city would be able to go in there and take care of issues as typically as the tree would, would do, running street trees are important to the street game. So that, that worked out with the condition of basically just set the tree where, where to take care of the trees as they be. The only thing I have any hesitation about here, I don't think I've ever done it, so I might be a bit. It's, yeah, you're right to do those things. We did have maybe one, but we were a little hesitant about the idea that the plan with discussion and assumptions here might presuppose that the council would want to accept those things. They all makes perfect sense to be here. At the end of the day, you know, we draft the line, do a decision to make it a requirement that is offered to the city, you know, but if it doesn't get accepted, you know, that, that tells a big, you know, applicant, the development team is not hanging there indefinitely. If the city council decides not to accept it, but at least it's been operated to your point. I just, I suggest that potential option of later, if you want to do that, it might, it might be a priority acceptance. But I just, I can imagine if someone has a case in the capital, we have the candidate way to decide to deal with it, that they don't accept it.
So, yeah, let's, let's talk about the street trees quickly here. So there are two street trees existing that are going to be retained. I think they're on either side of that driveway that's going into Lot 3.
One of them's going to come.
One of them's going to go.
So, yeah, so we're actually, we, we've had an initial discussion with Mike Hennessy and I believe, I believe Elise, I think Mike, he had some quick comments, I think, on the planting, but the plan is to work with Mike on what. I think on the planting, but the plan is to work with Mike on what, you know, what works there. Um, but one of those trees will need to go, um, it's too tight, it's pretty tight to split between. I think the one to the west would have to go. The other thing is those trees are on the, they're in that planting strip and the wires are right about it as far as those, those two streets, uh, two street trees. Which Mike said you completely, you know, he doesn't have a problem with his planting street trees in that strip. He said he, you just gotta use, make sure you use the smaller ones to plant that planting strip. And I think it's like a three foot strip between, you know.
So I, I, I think what, we want to work with, uh, we'll work with Mike and with you. And the only reason I'm even still talking about it is that the easement maintenance thing complicates things quite a bit. So if there's a way to give the city the right to come, so if there are certain trees that are proposed, not within the right of way, but on the private property, and you want to ensure that those trees are gonna be maintained and if they die, they're gonna be replaced. Number one, you can do that in the special permit, but that obligation through the special permit on the property owner and all successors. It's a recorded document.
And that's what happened.
Yeah, and I think, and I think you can also provide a condition that if they don't live up to their responsibilities on that, the, the city can come in and do the work themselves. Do you need an easement for them to do that? I think that's just like.
That, and, and sort of proper homeworks on the property beyond just the board's decision and sort of, you know, taking without compensation on something like that, right? So it's just very clear at that point that there's no ambiguity for the right to go on. And we're, we're building. Yeah, I, I, I know, uh, I'm not a big fan frankly about the extrabureaucratic mechanicality that's to happen, uh, but there is a way that this was addressed. It's the only time that I, the only time that I've been here that literally like a small wreck, most cargo.
Yeah.
The property to see where the trees and pits were, uh, the tree wouldn't be able to do that. Um, and again, I don't know if the captain will be something another one or, or, but we could accommodate that in some fashion in the way you're describing, different boards which is in the outfit.
Yeah.
Work together.
We'll work with you. Yeah.
And one more question. Uh, what is the electric service to the back lot?
Uh, I imagine, so there hasn't been work order, typically we don't know until you get a work order. I foresee it'll be going under, it'll be underground. There'll be, uh, something underground either on this edge. Um, typically they don't want it in paving. Um, and sometimes if, if there's not approved, there might be an easement, an alert to easement along this side. Most likely, I foresee that typically what is it, is usually they can bring two off of one transformer. So there's probably gonna be either a, probably a box here maybe, you know, pop over here, here, probably somewhere around here, I bet. At that point.
So there is, we use a required subdivision, we give you the underground service?
Yes.
So we, some point we, we had this issue on the front lane.
We did.
Yes.
And we don't have an issue yet.
So we should be able to deal with that in a condition, right? So prior to occupancies, issue attempt an occupancy permit or whatever landmark you want to specify, you get this nailed, nailed down and if it needs to be underground, we specify that in the condition, right?
And the zoning administrator would verify that.
Right.
And the EBS to put that to.
Right. Cable, second way, cable service, I mean, everything. Yeah, I don't know. We'll have to look at, um, most likely it'll be a drop, you know, the, the, the power's on our side of the street. So we wouldn't need an overhead coming across. It would drop down one of the poles, probably the one somewhere in front of lot three, four eight, three. I'm not sure. Yeah, there's one there.
Yeah, maybe if you're doing a, I don't know if that works or not, if you're doing an easement for the sewer anyway. Behind three.
Yeah, actually, yeah, you could run.
Between three and four eight.
You could. Yeah. Power company or you? That, uh, there'd be a, well, if you, power company would have to agree to it. They'd want an easement, but if you get an easement there, they just want easements in place typically now. Um, but yeah, it makes sense that you could probably hit all three. If three from one, between those, those two.
Yeah, the only, I guess the only comment, and they'll, and they'll specify it, I'm sure, is if you put an easement, it's gotta be accessible. So then when people put fences and lands and then they realize, oh.
Yeah.
You know, that's why the streets are, are along the streets of benefit.
Yeah.
Let them figure that out. It up for public comment? Comments to come forward?
Well, we're looking forward to, uh, saying, I'm, um, I'm a.
I'm sorry, if you could come forward and state your name and address.
Um, my name is Patty Kirschlow and I live in five sixty-six. I'm from the house that's going to be white out. And, um, I've met with Eric Heather. They showed me their plans and it all looks, uh, very, uh, very well thought out. And, um, my neighbors here, I the people in, uh, I think.
Any other comments? We will, we will close the public comment then. You know, come back to the board, any other deliberation? Motion.
Yeah, yeah, sorry, I couldn't. Sure, just to help out, I'm typically with these projects, obviously we have a number of things that Jeff mentioned, the applicants can go back and give you things before turning to the board, um, and I defer to your sort of thing, but is, is anything specifically you want incorporated or adjusted here? Obviously, you know, beyond the discussion we already had. Um, you know, helpful to incorporate those now. So I'm assuming of course a continuance here in context, but, um, but is there anything specifically you're concerned?
It seems like from, from all of the discussion that, that there are comments that still need to be addressed formally. Uh, peer review comments, comments from the city, uh, because that, that the board has brought in. Uh, so I'm, I'm assuming that we would all be interested in seeing those comments addressed formally on your plans, in your presentation, and those can then be addressed in the condition.
Yeah, I think that makes a lot of sense, uh, just in terms of your own process. Do you typically before, do, do you like to see draft decisions before you vote? So you're you're voting on that decision?
There'll be.
I'm only asking because we're having to work through that.
Yeah, I think we should for some of the things that we talked about. Some of the mark are sort of bullet plate and we don't run through that here.
Yeah, just like special conditions.
Special conditions, exactly. So I think for some of these, we definitely should, uh, we can work together, Caitlin and I, and the office can work together to do all that piece, um. We work together. Uh, just to make sure we're all good, but I think we can definitely work on that. I don't think there's anything else planned, but those we'll definitely work on. I think you'll see that with the staff report coming back next time. That'll be hopefully, uh, the discussion with the applicant, we'll be obviously updated that, whether what things are hanging, uh, or question, if they give us, um, and then it just be hopefully that one plan has everything, but unless there's something else to be identified here this evening, um, we would be, you know, obviously more than happy to do that. I don't know until the applicants find, checking on whether that's really less than two weeks or four weeks, you know, a date that does make sense.
And when do you need the revised plans?
Oh, yes, sorry. No less than a week before the meeting, uh, there was things that have to be uploaded to the, to the website for the record. And that way the board members can have, uh, time to review that and we can get a staff report to do that where things are. So you really don't want to forget, you, you really need to have that actually for the meeting. On, again.
So you need to have revised plans by next week or by three weeks.
Yeah, I mean, I think we should go three weeks. Um, and is that, that, that makes more sense. We all, with the commission, we're not expecting that to lead to any changes to this part of the project, but, um, so you're, you're, not your next meeting, but the one after that is when first.
Correct, yeah, it makes, it makes more sense to me in context.
April second, April second.
Yeah.
So I think that makes sense, right? So we, yeah, we would request a continuance, April second, we'll work with you on these topics. In the meantime, we've got a commission, we'll submit at least one week in advance, the updated materials. Should be good.
So, so question, when would you take up the A and R approval?
Oh, so I think what we're gonna see is after, after the approval of this, Jeff, but I think we're seeing is the A and R plan will come in at some time right after that. Break off the lots here that we're talking about, four being left in entirety, and then the subdivision plan, uh, that's consistent with this kind of well, right after that on, or lot four A, the.
So you should defer, please, sorry. We'll be voting on the, we'll be voting on the approval of the subdivision plan after the endorsement, after the issue of the A and R, or after, after the endorsement. So maybe, uh, all three plans become available.
That's, yeah, time.
Uh, we, yeah, we could do that. I had actually expected that we would just address the A and R process in a condition of approval. So once the approval was issued, it would but we can get.
I, I asked for that, I think you've been uncomfortable with that.
Yeah, okay.
Condition. For the condition is, is blue ball on a, on a future plan.
Oh, no, I think we can craft that here. I'm not, it's, I think it really, to, to your question anyway, it really comes down to the condition as drafted in the special permit. So I think we can certainly craft that and, and, and work that in here. So it's efficient process.
We have to create, we have to create, we have to create lot four.
Right, right.
So we almost need to have, so we need to have the A and R, you know.
I say, I should have said. If we have the A and R plan to reference, you know, they, they.
There's so much stuff in the subdivision plan, it's not in a special permit, you know, in terms of.
Yeah.
That, I'd feel comfortable, we have all, all of it together.
Yeah, I mean, if you're able to submit the plans.
We should be able to, it's already drafted, we, I drafted, it's in your package, but we should be able to get that submitted. You could then vote that.
Oh, no, sorry.
Even before the special.
We can look at the condition of the language, we could have a touch base on this, uh, to feel comfortable with the language and how it's tied together such that it's all coming into one point. We don't have a whole lot of back and forth after that, uh, but at the end of the day, it's really the special permit's gonna capture that condition here about the, uh, the subdivision A and R, and how they, they, uh, get endorsed and.
We just don't want to live in two words.
Yeah, yeah.
We say, oh, yeah, that's covered by that.
Yes.
You know, and A and Rs.
If this was already.
Enough, I think we should just get it down that.
That's what I'm saying.
Yeah, I think that makes sense. Yep.
I mean, A and R play a protective, and you know.
You could even come in at the next meeting.
Correct, correct, that's Steve, but.
That's up there. So, yeah. Let's see what he says about that, but I do agree, it would just be cleaner to just get it done. Easy enough, yeah.
But the conditions get shorter, the language, the conditions get back and forth, which is that everybody's.
Right.
You ready for motion?
Then, so.
We move to continue the special permit application to April second?
And the definitive.
We have to do a roll call. Yes. Jen?
Yes.
Alden?
Yes.
Charlie?
Yes.
Rick?
Yes.
Jack?
Yes.
Matt?
Yes.
And I am also, yeah, so, so great, see you, we'll see you on.
Sounds good. Thank you. Appreciate it.
Thank you very much.
What's the general business?
That's, that's going, no, thank you.
And, uh, we, we have three minutes.
Uh, so, I'm sorry, I'm sorry, I can't. I can't do a very recite. Um, so I, all of us, I've got the person that, I want to actually. Um, but on the side of documents, if I could briefly, I have to recap where that is, where it's headed. Um, I imagine Rick and I will speak a little bit more about that piece there, but, um, there's a lot, uh, in the side of evidence to update. Um, I should note, this is in the side section, it's only working, so. Um, to, uh, earlier today, uh, or yesterday and today, the, the court's on this, has to move to the next council packet. This ordinance amendment to do the science section, we can obviously review and, uh, make any tweaks from there, if we already have any suggestions, but um, we were anxious after some time and, and a lot of discussion about the side of where that's not the thing to write. They unfortunately, we keep getting signals, uh, from some of the, the council, but they're, they're gonna have to do ordinance amendments and changes and things like that. So we want to keep on ahead of updates to code. They, they tend to get out of date and there's various reasons to do so. So in essence, this amendment is doing a couple of things that I have a brief recap that's in there and then I'll, uh, email it out to you in the morning. If you have any thoughts on it, uh, I guess in the word version too, if you want, um, and we can, um, you know, see where things go from there, but we were, we wanted to because, mainly because of the council's process and the requirement of having a public hearing. Get through the submission of the council, that's what kicks off it, the process. So, um, in order to get the bureaucracy bureaucracies underway, um, we, uh, we have a council sponsor, government has been kind enough to sponsor this. Um, and in brief, I'll recap briefly the, the main substance of things that are happening in here and there's obviously words in it, but, um, but the goal here is like other sections of the ordinance, if we see this here, just keep a lot ahead of updates to these sections. And if you have any thoughts, want to think things, when we're in the public hearing process, we can do it. Uh, if we have thoughts before that, obviously we'll craft and add it in there. Going, um, we also don't know how the council, the general public, you know, in terms of getting public feedback, but I'm just gonna summarize briefly what we're trying to do here from letting us perspective. Um, where, I should clarify, by the way, is, it's one of the discussion points that I have with staff, with the plane board and council of years and others. Um, do we have an entirely new structure for the ordinance or the second involved versus keeping the section and everything and whatever is feeling it? And this one is about, is essentially using the structure and the sequencing of what's in there, not migrating too far away from that. We've sometimes had issues where people feel a couple more on the council side. And speaking about the idea that we, with the wholesale, we should, there's some concern about it. So, um, in some cases, we've decided not to, to tinker too much with that. And just sort of utilize the existing ordinance and then amend from there. So here you're seeing part on that existing ordinance. Um, you stricken through and the underlying or new text. So, um, one thing we're addressing in the purpose section a little bit is, um, just clarification, we're really trying to, this is going with space law, uh, but in essence, uh, the Reed versus Gilbert case law relatively recently, um, and I think there'll be some new case law, it's in the future, provided a bit, but uh, one thing we want to do throughout this ordinance here, um, and I should clarify, we're also in this section clarifying further down that there are, uh, several different general ordinance sections that deal with signage installations and the public right of way of their locations. And this is the complexity of updating cities, because we have to go back and take it with these other sections too. So, um, I'll be working separately with the council on that piece there, and the staff, obviously if you folks have questions about those sections, um, that primarily deals with the public right of way. And a few things related to public properties specifically, but our zoning ordinance is really dealing with all the harsher properties, so outside the right of way, uh, including public properties. So here, you know, we see some overlap between these, but we're trying to make it clear, uh, which, what, what these general ordinances are dealing with versus the zoning ordinance. Um, we also clarify, for instance, where, uh, the downtown overlay district in another section has some particular requirements that people can look there. Um, this also goes to structural ordinances, so it'd be great if all signage things were in one place, but the way you were just evolve over time and things get added based on the preferences at that time. And it's hard to somehow always keep things where they, what they belong. Uh, so in essence, where, for instance, by example, here at the Sparkville district, the state literally wants us to have a separate ordinance for this. Not moving somewhere else, is part of the process, make us do that, we did. So there's signage requirements there, and so we just clarify the side of section of our entire ordinance, please look there. Again, this is, you know, there's an ideal world where everything comes in a very efficient package and all signage stuff is in all one section, uh, but unfortunately it doesn't work that. So, um, the, the consequence here is we're just trying to make it very clear to a breeder, uh, that if you're looking for all the science regulations, where you should be going, if you're looking for those other things and where jurisdiction is.
Can I interrupt your idea?
Yeah, please.
I can, I can anticipate that when we have any waterfront questions, we'll update it, we'll reset sign reading.
Good one.
Do you want to have a sentence in here that says, refers to other?
Yeah.
Overlay districts?
Yes. Uh, that's a great point. Um, you know, I, originally when we were starting to do some of this rewrite process to, to, the idea was like, let's have generic language and we, we were talking about structural ordinance where all the overlays are one section, right? And we'll eventually get there in terms of proper structure, but every time we try to get off, you know, too much at once and restructure, it becomes a problem. Uh, to do that. So, uh, to your point, I think we should definitely use a block plate language, matter of fact, so that even if we have some difficulty with the council rerecognizing where things are or something like that, then we have block plate language that covers that more broadly than just the specific ones that are here. So, here you go. Um, we did that in another case, we should just leave it here. Sorry, jumped there to be out of this. So generally speaking, we're just clarifying what this section does. There's a couple of language tweaks in here and out there elsewhere in the ordinance that are dealing with the fact that we're trying to avoid and Rick, please go for it, you're attempting this. Uh, as well, but what we're trying to avoid is essentially focusing too much on the content of the sign. I don't want to go so far as to say we can't get the. I don't want to go so far as to say we can't read the content of the signs because you do have to read some of that. Uh, but in essence, there's case law, this reverse get a little bit into, um, we really should, it goes back to free speech. So we really shouldn't be regulating so much the content of that message that's in there so much as say, um, and this is what we're trying to do here is. Regulating the size, the, you know, the, the style, what can be allowed, you know, spatially, you know, a lot, you know, placement and, and scale and support. Uh, types of signs, you know, illumination and flashing and all that kind of stuff could be problematic. You know, that's actually about the type of sign. Uh, as well as things like, is it related to an underlying land use? So, um, that's something we can show a clear nexus to. I think we have more ability to defend that. It's a more random challenge thing, uh, based on this case law. Um, we're trying to basically, uh, take out phrasing that's dealing with things like, well, is that a political sign or is it not? Or, you know? Um, so things like that, you see a little bit of tweaks in the language to take out some phrasing like that and to really focus on. What, uh, do we care about in terms of aesthetics, you know, those signs? There are, there continues to be in here a temporary signage section dealing with, you know, the temporary placement of these signs. But because they're in short duration, the zoning administrator can say, look, these things need to be enforced and then they're pretty well, you know.
Is there a fundamental change resulting?
Uh.
I mean, what do we change?
I don't, yeah, sorry. So, so that piece is really, I would argue, is more about taking out specific language. I will, I will show one to answer your question. There's a second, I can do the second it does. Um. We see the majority of the deletion, let's say. If you have comments related to that, but for the most part, um, you have this, um, clarification of, you know, what jurisdictions cover here or what the else is. There's a few definitions that change, um, uh, in here, and I'm sorry for the, I'm a serious question. Um, there is a wayfinding and the addition of wayfinding signage you'll see here. Uh, the idea was to basically allow a streamlined process by which having consolidated signs. Um, or say, uh, wayfinding in a downtown or in the entire business park. Or even in some cases, like, uh, if you look at the end of Moon Master Way. Um, having all those A-frames that are clustered out there blocking ways going around, you know, downtown's an issue. Uh, why not allow a streamlined process where the business park associated on the entire street, you know, with all the businesses on the street could come in. If you could put it one sign, it's very easily organized. Uh, and it'd be, this was just the initial thought about like, kind of have that be done in a streamlined fashion. I, I wasn't asking on, uh, running it through a city council process or, you know, even necessarily if it needs to come here. It, I'm moving to whatever the option is there, but I do want to kind of streamline the ability to do wayfinding sign. When it's being reviewed and administered by the city itself, we know that that's not going to get. Uh, and what it really is intent to do is get rid of all the clutter that is happening and make it. So that's what that piece is there. Um, we clarify, we use better language about the package size. We have a permit, we don't have a building permit, there's a sign permit. Um, that we make it clear if you don't exercise. They, they take away. Yeah. Um, privacy, we're in the same grand, not in place. Um, there is a whole section here. I won't go through in depth, but there's a whole section here dealing with general regulations for signs and these particulars. Um, you know, about internal donation and, you know, all what types of. We made a few adjustments. We've tried to, uh, beyond that section, there, there's two things in here that you'll see that are your question. Um, municipal signage, uh, we just want to clarify, for instance, the fact that our signage ordinance right now, so you can't reach standing signs outside the business park. Really says that we can't have municipal signage on a park property that says like, you know, you're arrive that Sherwood, you know, start a, but it doesn't make a whole lot of sense. So at least in my view. So, so what we've done is we've put a provision, just clarifying that allowance there. Uh, we have a sample of some sign, a sign that goes, I do, we've seen a number of these, like senior center arriving, you know. Two granite posts, you know, sort of, you know, in between. Um, we can tweak these if people have. Particular size of scale and so forth, but these is largely based on existing ordinance or prohibited or, um, you know, consolidated here, but. Um, there's another option allowed, other than sort of identifying the property or giving rules where actually you might see the recreational facilities in particular. Um, but also allowing a one, uh, one freestanding, um, sign that's really related to things like financial contributions to donors. Specifically game, uh, concerned with parks commission in terms of, it looks like there's fundraising efforts that are going on with this. Or words cloud, something like that. We obviously don't want to allow any of the clutter, so to speak, in the city, although we thought there was a reasonable way to balance that. You know, having signs that are, um, you know, minimal in the number of locations. So here, what is recreational facility here, uh, site involved? Not more of Mal, you know, acts in common, but really we're talking about lower. Uh, it's an entire field type, right?
Is there a time, sorry?
Yeah, I'm sorry.
Is there a timeframe? Like say they put up a big municipal regulatory sign or, uh, wants choice for donors. Does it stay up forever?
Um, so. Yeah, um, so here from the zoning perspective, this isn't really basically saying this is a dead boy, you know, it's not like a temporary sign. Um, but the parks commission, for instance, if it had caring custody, there's a reference here of the. Division of the city with caring custody has also review and approve, right, to make it. Um, and what it has with the private parks commission, but that. Commission could say that can only be there for a certain duration of time, for instance, because it's tied to certain improvements. Uh, so I don't know how that'll be sorted.
You're thinking about thirty-two, put by thirty-two by eight, right?
Yeah.
And it just sits there forever and maybe it's not a favorable sign for the community.
Yeah.
Like, is there, can, can you put a timeframe on it or?
Yeah, I mean, just to be clear, uh, it's a policy of the discussion and it overlaps a little bit. We might hear, we might hear as we get into this discussion. Like, my check on this piece, but, um, they might have some concerns because they want to, I think, allow enough flexibility for that sign to stay as long as it's tied to the, like, it's. The lifespan of the thing that was funded.
Right, exactly.
So I don't know, but to your point, like, I assume they would come up at some point, that name gets replaced.
The word that I, I avoid, I assume.
Yeah, I, I think the idea here is, because it's actually come up with, to your point, it's actually come up before. Um, the naming thing before with benches in particular, the city council, like, recently, the idea like, well, those, do you get that indefinitely? Because obviously at some point the benches no longer use, well, someone else has. It's new, so, so that, that's been identified as something to base us. Jen, I'm assuming here, and I certainly support the idea, I'm not going to words, but. But I think our goal here between, you know, office planning, development, parks, I'd rather have uniformity to these things and park facilities. For instance, to go to recreational facility, it's got the two granite posts in between. And those names are there for maybe, you know, a ten year period or five years, that then replace the new one that had funded recent things and something like that, but not having.
What we're talking about, like multiple signs. As a school building.
Yeah, either you could have. No, this is the one, one freestanding sign only per frontage, uh, in this provision, so per frontage. Where there's recreational facilities, uh, of some type. And so we were trying to put, this is really what. The parts side was saying, can we have this? And the office planning development was saying, all right, we can do that, but we really need to try to. Set a cap, some thresholds, something. We really didn't want to get out of control. So, I mean, for our initial reaction to that was, we should consider that to be cleared out of the gates and then see how do we, you know, craft a way into that. Um, so what we came up with was something here sort of on balance. And again, we can tweak and adjust from here, but we were trying to come up with something that would allow. You know, one only, you know, that frontage only on those properties and those parties that have that recreational facility, um, not other park, you know, or any facility in the city.
I was thinking L, not L.
Sorry?
I was kind of referencing, oh, not necessarily.
Oh, L, sorry. Um, yeah, I mean, again, here we could put in like, you know, only one. We could adjust the size of this, this, the size of the address. You know, Jennifer, I talked about the, um, you know, the height, for instance, whether that's something like eight or eight feet. I'd be perfectly fine saying five feet, there's a lot of, you know, there might be a situation, you need some flexibility.
Sure.
Um, and I'd be perfectly happy to, you know, tweak on that, but I'm, I'm perfectly fine also pulling things down and kind of keeping things. You know, not, we don't want billboards.
So I mean, is the sign, is the sign structure included in there?
Um, the structure itself is not the panel. So for instance, if it was just a grant post, the post's not.
And I think we've got to see the signs that we have at the entrance to the.
Yeah.
The, the whole structure is eight foot, one inch tall.
Yeah.
You've got eight foot, I didn't know whether you would be, but we had to cut up that inch.
Yeah.
Also, but the, but the, but the sign itself is much less than eight feet. The sign is probably four feet.
Yeah, yeah.
But it's on the eight foot structure.
The, it, it, there are a few instances in which we'd have to interpret depending on how it's structured and how it's done, but we're going to take that larger surface or structure. And count it against the sign, generally speaking. So, uh, and I, I know there's something signed about a slightly unique situation, like for instance, like the calculation of like the, the language, like calculate the, the area of a sign with square. Circle or a sphere. Um, but yeah, we're going to basically go on the more restrictive side and say that's going to cap a part of the area. Well, um, if there's something that's sort of at the grade level, it's just, you know, components attached to the ground, the columns coming up. We're not really penalizing for that, but if it's going to be received as part of the surface area, that's blocking a view, let's say. We're, we're trying to feed that surface.
I think that's a good, is a good preference point, that those signs are eight feet by three feet wide, eight feet tall by fifty one.
Yeah.
So that's what you're really talking about here. That's, that's a reference.
It is a good reference point. Yeah. And I'm conflicted myself about at least the amount of signage or. At the same time, you know, there's a need to identify certain places, like a lot of things you don't keep that as much these days with GPS. Um, but, um, so I'm more than amenable to, you know, make and tweak some of these. There's always the reasonable argument to make about reducing or adjusting heights and sizes and so forth. Let's see what the non-regulatory donor size is capped by, by feet height. Um, this one was eight foot height allowance. Again, some, these are each coming from solid, you know, places like the existing division and so forth. So I'm not going to. Go too far. I think the real question for us is, do we want to tweak, you know, something to this? So what is it going to sound? Yeah. So I'm sorry, I heard that.
No, 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 it's not a perfect question.
Uh, is, are there things in the sign regulation, is there letter sign restrictions? Like if it's just on a, on a building, but it's just block letters? There's no.
Um, we, there is some allowance for using lettering, for instance, but like, well, I mean, John's speaking, that's still going to be depending on the type of sign. Is that's going to be treated as a sign, uh, for the area that, that encapsulate right time. That, that encapsulates lettering. So given the lettering of the building, we're going to take a right angle around that and count that as. You know, letters and that. So we're going to basically.
So it's covered in there. You, there's language that.
Yeah, there's language in here. There are some things like in the downtown and you can't, uh, you can't put it on the brick surface. Um, so, you know, the unmade brick surfaces that we have that are stored, it's a, uh, tech. Those, again, these are all policies.
Are you hearing quite, is there, is there a measurement definition? How you'd cover it?
Like a market basket sign, right?
Yeah, there's a definition of that in here, but I, I think to your question, there's always, we're always looking to improve on things like that. So, um, we've looked at different examples elsewhere. If there's something that, that you feel, you know, is, you know, let me know. But we do, we do have definition of how that's calculated, but I do think there are sometimes it's, we haven't foreseen or it could come up.
So I, I just, um, when I lived in Natick, there was, the Natick Mall had filings and Sears and. And we, uh, me and Marcus, we went through. It never made sense to anybody, the people that wrote it, the people that were buying, because filings had thin lettering, but it was the size of. And they came up with this wacky internal area, useful area. I was like, what? It's, you know. Yeah, you could make it this thin and make it.
The size of gray.
So I'll look for that when you send it to me.
Yeah, I mean, I, I definitely agree with this, what John is speaking, starting with the premise that you want to calculate the largest possible area of what's being created here. You know, right, you know, and, and because it's adding spatial clutter to, you know, the environment, maybe character of the city.
Are we looking, are we looking, it's a general idea, forgive me if this has already been put out there. Uh, to have a certain character of lettering and signs to kind of be in line.
No, because that presents, we're going in a little bit of the free speech stuff of private signs. I just wanted, I would, I was, I'm very particular. Public side, we have a lot of like the park facilities with the hanging signs on, right? I, I'm a big fan of having consistency. So, um, like Fuller Field, for instance, you know, if you have a sign there, you're going in and you see Fuller Field. Jennifer and I were having a discussion, why not put the donor signs, their names on the back of the sign as you leave the site to get it? Why do we need infrastructure? That kind of thing, right? Apparently in the discussions, there are some people who want like a totally separate sign structure. And so we have these sort of balancing constraints here.
It's a logo, maybe too, right? It's like, when you get into the logo world, that's where, you know, for a business, that's where it gets crazy because the logo could be this massive thing. Well, that's sign.
Yeah.
That's your recognition.
And we'll treat that as a sign. Yeah. And that, that's actually, you made me think of, that's a good example, one of the sort of free speech things we took out of this. There was language in the ordinance that we really can't enforce. Basically, you can't use brand names and trademarks and, you know, those things. You know, sort of like large companies, you know. Can't be on a sign. We can't enforce, you know, say you can't have those, uh, I think the idea is a little. So maybe we do the site.
But maybe I haven't read the new case law. But if you go to like, I don't know, Stowe, Vermont, for example.
Yeah.
Where, you know, McDonald's couldn't have a big old gobbst. They barely see the golden arch.
Well, that's the, that's the finding. So. But then the area, not the fact that they're going to do, they couldn't have their. We can't say, you can't have your trademark is basically the language we have right now. Implies that we would be saying no to some of those, and that's not.
Well, you can have your M. They could have the M, but it has to dip, like you said.
Yeah.
And then a certain, and then, yeah. Yes, maybe it's, you know, you know, circle by like.
Yeah.
Clubber or something.
Yeah.
A certain way.
I don't know if I remember the CBS sign, it was, uh, at Barhamal years ago before they. So it, it currently is a billboard. It's now a, it's a giant white CBS sign, I don't know if I remember, right? Um, but years ago, I had pictures because it was a dispute between myself and the building commissioner at the time, as the butter racing competitor. Uh, but the, it wasn't enforced at the time this issue, but they had effectively changed the surface of that sign. I can send you the picture, but. It was basically four or five lines of white text, sort of like a, a marquee type thing. And the reason I point that out is because to me, the CBS sign that's there today feels much more like a billboard than that one did. It's a little bit more like your, a little bit more like a, um, you know, uh, directory size, you know, back to this there. And the plot sizes because they were smaller, um, and they, they were basically, you know, it was a little bit more because the lines that were in there, it's a bit more dark surface. So now it's creating this giant sort of bright thing, right? And it's been there for years, but, um, but I was of the opinion that that was a violation of the ordinance. And I had to go back to the board for review, uh, because I was concerned that that was bastardizing the part of that. Giant billboard there. Uh, but at any rate, that's, this is one example of, you know, basically a more flat design almost where like it had higher.
Yes.
Like express video.
Yes.
Whitehead.
Yes.
And actually, the, it's a good point about what dark, darker color of white versus lighter color of dark. Because you have the same size.
Yes.
And if you, it's sort of, if the ordinance says, because a lot of the sign that for a toss card, lighter, lighter. Letter or darker back.
Yeah.
They seem much less intrusive.
Yeah.
The CBS would have read.
I agree one hundred percent. And again, there's, there's many different options, and I'm sure as soon as we come up with ours, we'll throw it in and tweak here. But the halo lights, uh, for instance, I'm a big fan of halo lighting, um, as a way of doing some of what they're trying to achieve, you know, much more subtle way. So there's not, you know, um, broadcasting. So, you know, we wanted to add specific phrasing about that. I'm actually in there like sort of encouraging, you know, leaving it away.
Did you, did you think at all about? Discussion about, about actually exempting the city from regulations because it's a city agency that is determining what's. You know, it seems.
Yeah.
You have to have a.
Yeah.
To make the city go through.
Yeah.
A zoning approval for a sign.
Yeah.
City council is true.
It's a very good. We, we certainly had that discussion. We progress on, but the, the idea of even city uses for us, that's another thing that. Um, I, I think here on Val's, we might have some others who were concerned about the idea that we haven't put a cap on it, let's say. The park sign, it might be an example of that, for instance. So a ton of people are saying, oh, I'll give money if I get a sign. There's no cap on it. These are, for instance, why, again, there's, it's, there's different layers of it. It would be a body of the city that's responsible for answering for the brochure offended by the number of signs. You know, how it happened or was appropriate. But I think, um, and to your point, we can take out, I would be perfectly, you know, fine in a lot of cases, you know, exemption for the city because we're serving the public. A lot of reasons for that, because we can call it real purposes. Um, but I think the logic, at least the structure right now, is that there's at least a cap on the clutter side.
Have you looked at, for example, the little stuff sign to see what, are that fits in these regulations?
Uh, I haven't, we haven't measured every sign right now, but we certainly have been looking at some of those, like whether they're bombs. I tend to be on like a look forward basis, so there might be things grandfathered today that we may not want to mimic. But to your point, um, I think what we might be thinking is with the council, like having a, with the playing where the council, like, slide sequence, like, here are some of the signs that we have. We can't go through all the options and examples for this, but here are some of the things that illustrate some of the size of scale. And we have a park owner or so, like, uh, or illustrate something that we're trying to encourage or avoid.
I guess, I guess my sense is things like the rail trail signs and blocks small signs are perfectly appropriate for the scale of the activity. So I would, I would not want a wide important in the future.
Yeah. Agreed, agreed. I think, uh, I'll, I'll do some rereading this, thinking about that, but, uh, again, if you see anything, I definitely agree with. So more flexibility, I would argue, it's not down there to me, it's, because I actually think of the public as being served by the city. So, um, there's a very good distinction between like private sector, which completely deserves to be no private sector. Um, through that being set there, there's a regional regulation and there are aesthetics and delivery point, I think, through zoning. But I also, John is speaking, think that there should be more allowed to, um, the fact that we don't allow freestanding signs anywhere in the city outside of the business park or code. But we obviously need to identify in public facilities, like you're riding a high street to the senior center in Brezner, you have no idea what's there. You know, yes, you're using G D S, but that's a very appropriate place to. And resonating, you have no idea what's gonna, you know, yes, you're using GPS, but that's a very appropriate place to have a sign. Um and so our coach, at least the company, something like that, um I wouldn't wanna see a donor sign. It's read there, um but um but Fuller, Fuller Field or, you know, Chuck Hills, like. Or like in the competition of the rail trail, I have an exception, if it's a map or a way. Yeah, we did try, there's language in here, we're trying to make it clear that things like, you know, interpretive signage, or um, you know, sm- smaller signs that's dealing with, like, you know. Rules for use of the park property, you know, like, that's small, uh we can take a look at wordsmith, we did try to capture language, allows those things without sort of. Looping them in and sort of making it seem like those are also regulated and prohibited, because there's a reason for. Um obviously, to your point, right, so it's, there is some difference that has to give in the department division involved, so if. Be keeping an eye on the number of signs, they should also care about.
Yeah, and I guess, I was discussing what you were saying about the, you know, municipal side of the signage. But you could write those rules as rules that the city has that aren't to the public turning, basically.
Yeah.
Covering size and expectations, but if you improved over time, or you made an exception.
Yeah.
You wouldn't have to violate. Hey, are they getting any exception over here? Exactly, you're a very.
And and frankly, for that sole reason, is the one that I'm most persuaded, like, by the aesthetic side, I'm like, we gotta put a cap, we gotta have some kind of provisions. On the streamlined side, because of how long it takes to get things done in a lot of way, I'm much more in favor of saying, well, you know, have that be a streamlined process. There is always a responsible entity, if it's, the property's under the school department, or the Parks Commission, or the Conservation Commissioner, there's always a responsible entity. And there should be an explanation for having billboards go by, you know.
Yeah.
So um but, yeah, I'm I'm amenable to, uh you know, more flexibility on those lines, and really relying upon a division of the city to keep an eye on some of those things, like, you know, rest of us. Rather than saying, this ordinance has to. I just, as long as I, I certainly support the idea of, you know, aesthetic improvement in the city. Yeah, so I'll send this out, um you know, I think the wayfinding thing is. To learn to capture something that allows that to happen, the reason I mention that in here is, wayfinding might happen in the public, way a lot, you know, you think about it for navigation type things, or we're thinking about that. But there are locations where uh it might be beneficial to have it on public property for some reason, um or private property. And if we have the agreements, it's all for that, it might, I do want it to allow some, in the zoning ordinance, for that to be facilitated while we're in there taking the second, the ordinance. And we've talked so much about wayfinding, so um so that's why it's in there, but keep in mind that um there is this discussion to have with the council, to be engaging in. Um about, you know, deciding right away and clutter there, obviously, but some of it. Properties like parks.
So what is your timeframe, Danny, and you must have missed that, when, when would you like to speed that back?
Um well, so we're, we're, we're gonna be having a hearing on this amendment as you're seeing it.
Yeah.
And so it's basically prior to that hearing, uh if you're due, or at the time of hearing, we're gonna have our usual process. It's just that unfortunately, because of how long it takes for everything backs up through a bunch of different cycles, um there's a number of folks who just. And, and you know, there's two, and just to get it, it's only changed down in signing, so we weren't, we weren't waiting, we weren't willing to wait any longer, be like, let's go to another committee, another. Let's bring something forward, we can. And changes folks a lot, so you have weeks, but we're gonna have a hearing, uh it'll probably be in like, you know, late, it's gonna be late, it's gonna be uh probably. First meeting in April at this point, maybe in the game.
But you'd take feedback any time between now?
Yeah, anytime, thank you, uh yeah, uh the only difficulty I typically have is um the, the most streamlined way you can provide over feedback to me uh is the best. Because I end up getting feedback from a number of different places, and sometimes they're different versions of word documents, sometimes they're a bullet list, sometimes the comments don't agree with each other. And that becomes a burden to try to merge it all together in a way that satisfies everybody, you know, as soon as possible. So um uh each of you have to do, uh you know, when you get the document, you can put in the Word markup, you can send me a bullet list back, and say, I have a concern, this or that, pay for this, you know, something. Whatever works for you, but the simplest way of giving me feedback in a coherent way, uh that way, I can try to do my best to consolidate all the edits and adjustments. That is something that, uh hopefully addresses everybody's concerns. If it doesn't, we can discuss, you know, where something, the possible, you know, debate at that, that happened, and you will figure it out.
I I think, just speaking for myself, but maybe others share, I always like to get my feedback in early, so that when we have a hearing, I'm like. Wide-eyed going, oh, how does that work?
Yeah.
You really thought it through, and if I have to write it down, I've thought it through.
Yeah.
If I just hear it, I go, oh, that sounds.
Yeah, so I'll send the Word version, so you're welcome to mark that, if you use, use Word markup tools, you can do that, um that's also easy for us to use as well, that's taking feedback. Uh the only, uh we'll get other versions from other people, and so.
Yeah.
You know, try to merge and sort of those out, sometimes the language agreements are almost the same, so. If it's a subject thing, we'll have to debate it, if it's a language thing, it's usually easy to operate, to a few people that is.
Is it, is it going to the city council on Monday?
So it's going to the council on Monday, so we, just so we can simply use that meeting to send it to committee, uh if we want. I think it's probably April second, again, for you folks, so usually check with the chair, this board, as well as the chair of plenty of the city council, what we schedule a date, but. Probably would have named for some. Yeah, I don't.
If you send it to us and we said, let's have any input for the meeting on the nineteenth.
Yeah. We could, we could add, we could keep it in the agenda, we could discuss, and then we even prior to the hearing, we could vet amongst ourselves the things that, you know, folks might have thoughts.
Yeah, 'cause I know, talking to Jamie, he was saying, yeah, same thing, give me an assignment, tell me when.
Yeah.
And I'll shoot towards it.
So what I'll, I'll just mention in my emails, especially, it's not, I'll just mention, you know, please, uh if you don't have return comments, please bring them at least to the meeting, you know, the. Um yeah, get anything else, you'll see anything else in there, but well, that's. Clarification, we did, by the way, uh one thing that. Just to clarify, maybe just so you understand the structure, but we took, there was a separate document left over, lingering for years from the redevelopment authority. Signs regulations, and so we were cross referencing that, and based on the sort of, you know, usual processes and half-happen things, and based on people's references at the time. That got incorporated in the signage ordinance as a separate document, which is very confusing for people, find information, right, for obvious reasons. So we tried to basically take the some of the pieces of that worksheet that say, these are specific guidelines for the downtown, and put them in this ordinance, so we don't have to ask. For that section two in a totally separate document, so but other than that, yeah, I think, it's just, it's, you know, words that, you know, those things.
So on the nineteen, as far as I know, we have.
Actually, yeah. And since you, you will, I definitely be getting that description there too, um then I think we should, we will, I actually, the feedback in the group would be helpful, because like. But if it's um maybe there are no days after that setting up. That's all kind of fitting together, you know, um then, um if you folks wanna talk about that. Meeting, you know, but um also, we can migrate into the actual sort of ideas of the area, because I think the block, or idea of the scale. What uses are likely to stay there or change over time, the parking right, you know, a lot is in there and stuff.
So, so if we just procedurally, if we got that, that scope, we looked at it, maybe as a small group, but then on the nineteenth. We could give a summary of where we were to everybody, hey, this is what we've done, and this is, and then, and then expand it, and then, and almost have the. Collective conversations.
Yeah. Yeah.
That makes sense. So we will, we will, we will meet tomorrow.
Correct, if you don't mind, it would be great to meet next Thursday.
Sure. Let's follow up next Thursday.
Yeah.
We'll interact together.
Maybe there's some committees. Yeah. And again, I'm all that we are gonna have others over the amendments to this year, so. It definitely should be for us, largely, we have the council side, but we'll try to cycle them in with your regular meetings or.
So again, for us, that's part of the conference, right? It helps us to get on a regiment, right, if we're gonna have something, I think we learn, I've heard that, that we get it, we meet, we do whatever we gotta do, but keep it. If it just drips.
Yeah.
And it's this concept that everyone's thinking about, it's not a good use of our brainpower, because it doesn't stick.
Agreed.
I agree, and.
Agreed.
So it sounds like an exciting meeting on the nineteenth, I won't be here.
Yeah. Oh, I mean, I'm sure you're gonna give us.
Well, Rick, you had to leave us on it.
You, whatever you set up.
I moved to adjourn.
I'm gonna do roll call again.
Yes.
Yeah.
I think she left. She is left. Yes.
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 Yeah.
Yes.
Yes.